Good evening, Chair. Calls to order public hearing for Bill 24-002, Ag Land Preservation Council. It's my pleasure to welcome, Show, Mr. Amos, Ms. Wilson, whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, we're here to present our version of Bill 24-002, the Agricultural Land Preservation Bill. So, just to give you a little bit of a timeline here, this bill's been a long time coming. It began in 2021, and with the first workgroup reviewing the code provisions to improve our land preservation program. And ultimately, the revisions were placed in the hands of Bill and Bill Amos and Jen Wilson, sitting right here next to me. So, in November of 2022, Bill and Jen reviewed the prior workgroup's comments and began looking at the legislation from a new perspective. And they went through an extensive process, actually, of understanding the community's needs and wants, which actually is, you know, the administration's preferred method of handling new legislation. So, they met with elected officials, workgroups, agricultural boards, members of the Hartford County community, some of which are here tonight, actually. So, I don't want to take too much of your time because Bill and Jen have a nice presentation for you, but just to mention that cooperation with these workgroups, the council, the law department, planning and zoning resulted in this legislation that you have before you. So, rest assured, many, many people have reviewed this legislation, and we believe that this is something that is beneficial for our community, you know, our Hartford County community, land and landowners. So, Bill, Jen?
Bill, before you start, if I may, I just want to recognize some of those board members or committee members that are in the audience here this evening, and then also Councilman Schroes, former Councilman Schroes, who's in the audience this evening, who was one of the people very involved from the beginning of this. So, thank you all for being here this evening. Mr. Amos, whenever you're ready.
One more thing before Bill starts. We do have two tiny amendments that we will send over to you to review. They're just typos that, after so many reviews, we still noticed a couple of things. I already prepared the amendment, and we'll send it over after the hearing tonight.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And again, a shout out to the county council workgroup for working on this, Deborah Bowers and Kristen Kirkwood for being the point of that workgroup. So, a brief history and a benefit everybody at home. The county program, as you know, we're talking about tonight, began in 1992, following our state mouth program and in the future rural legacy, acts as three main programs that preserve farms and wooded areas in Hartford County. So, the county program started in 1992, funded by a half of the 1% real estate transfer tax. The other half goes to new school construction. In essence, it gives equity to landowners in exchange for permanent conservation easements, which limit future residential, commercial, and institutional development. Currently, we have over 37,700 acres in the program, and our total is over 64,000 a day. We just did two settlements through the mouth program last week. The previous council had concerns, wanted additional preservation options for their districts, and also value the purpose of including woodland under the program, and a couple other items we'll mention as we go along. As Show explained, the revision process, council formed the workgroup and reviewed the existing code, including all zoning categories to come into the program, and added support and value for natural resources, and highlighting the many purposes of the program. And we worked with the workgroup's technical committee, and we went through the communities, including all the agricultural community groups, and any individuals that wanted to meet with us to go over what they would like to see in the updating of the county program, and then flush that through two times with different, the building drafts that are in front of you today. So, the most notable changes, sorry, thanks. Most notable changes to the program is that residential subdivision, commercial, industrial, and institutional uses will not be allowed, but it would be open to all zoning categories. We also had to replace the references to the family advances and development rights, and took that out of the title, because now we're opening up to all zoning categories. But again, we're only going to be paying agricultural values, plus of bonus payments that we'll explain as we go through it. The purpose and the intent, we certainly added the forest products through it. We had the community concerned if we should be preserving timberland, as you know, to us as agricultural producers, it's just a slow-growing product, you know, harvested every 20 years typically, but we wanted to add it to the legislation. And then we wanted to add all those secondary purposes that we always know are happening, like a permanent solution to suburban sprawl, aquifer recharge, wildlife habitat, and limiting the need for community services. The definitions section, we had to go through and update. Some of the updates were dealing with agricultural land, child slots, easement priority ranking. New to this section, but based on the zoning code, was density, homeowners association, major stream, and minor stream. And terms being used but not previously defined were things like final easement offer, location incentive payment, and valuation number. Continuing with the definitions sections, we renamed some previously listed terms that would flow better and be more understandable by the common layman or the taxpayers out there. Base multiplication easement value is now called base multiplier value. Maximum easement per acre value is now called formula value. Development rights easement is now called easement. Maximum development right value is now called residential density value cap, and maximum per acre value is now called per acre value cap. And then, brand-new terms to finish it out, agricultural land was defined, agricultural overlay district, and development potential. Okay, the agricultural easements, existing practices being codified. No residential subdivision, commercial, industrial, and institutional uses allowed in the future, consolidated multiple parcels prior to settlement. So, we have one farm coming in that's made up of multiple parcels. We require a consolidation deed plus a recorded plat to show that is now as one tax account number. We do that in practice, but we hadn't listed that in the bill. Reducing acreage of forests required to maintain a forest stewardship plan, 25 down to 10. There was much debate about that, and it was a meeting in the middle grounds of 10 acres. Application to sell development rights excluding areas with approved non-ag uses. Every once in a while, we have a farm that's already had a special assessment, I mean, a special exception approved, such as a commercial construction site. It's still, the whole property can come in the program, but we're not going to pay, we're not going to pay for the property that's under special exception. Use criteria, previously focused on ag zoning, now it's open to all zoning. This does not include the land designated as open space within a development, and this criteria was previously in the soil criteria section, same wording, new location. Size criteria, currently, we have 50 acres as a minimum, or you adjoin somebody that has at least 50 acres, or you come together with somebody to form 50 acres to be eligible. We're going to drop that down to 20 acres with a minimum no less than 10 acres. And that certainly will encourage more people to come into the program, building those building blocks in places that don't have much easement activity. So, we think that's a very favorable approval. Soil criteria, we used to have two categories, we're going to drop it down to one. So, 50% of the property must consist of class 1, 2, or 3 soils of high quality. And still the same exception language, and we moved that placement. So, therefore, we had to capitalize it in the bill. Ownership criteria, only criteria is that not be owned by HOA, open space, or a public utility. As you know, those open spaces designated in a residential development are already preserved, can't be developed, and certainly the public utility lines. We just want to be clear that we're not going to go preserve those properties. Development potential criteria encompasses all types of development, both residential and commercial, needs to ensure a property can actually be developed, especially in commercial zonings. So, this is kind of our safe clause we talked about. If there's our concerns on a property that's truly undevelopable for everybody that, you know, has experience in development, it would have to be up to the landowner to demonstrate their property can be developed. So, we're thinking, you know, a property along Route 40 maybe, or someplace that is no way can be developed, won't be coming into the program. Permitted uses section, remaining as same as current, and we rely on the zoning code. So, as you change the zoning code, in case someday agricultural zoning code is adjusted, it will be adjusted for the program. Creating an agricultural overlay district, we were worried about if a property that's non-ag zone comes in the program. According to zoning, it might not be allowed to do things that you would want to do on ag-preserved properties, such as a farmer's market, tenant home, or a main dwelling. So, we're going to do overlay district on those properties, and then the next rezoning, it has to be rezoned to agriculture. Exclusions of lots under easements, remains the same. We're talking about only permitted for landowners that enter their property into the program, and the majority of them are never used. We're talking about owner's lots and child's lots. And clarification related to building permits, resolving the secondary owner's concern about coming back in and getting a permit to improve the dwelling, and I think we talked about those issues, and I think this is a great way to resolve that. Limited number of lot exclusions permitted to development rates or density purchased. That means if a property comes into the program, is very limited on the number of rights were preserved, it certainly can't go over that if they're creating an owner's lot or a child's lot. Program timeline, as you know, believe it or not, all these 30-plus years, we have not had a dedicated timeline, and it really would help us administer the program, and also be really helpful, predictable for landowners that would like to come into the program. So, we're suggesting May 1st would be the application deadline. July would be the offer, when offers would come out, accepted offers would go to county council in September, and the completed, the settlements would have to be completed June 30th of the same fiscal year. So, in that way, we would maximize our ability to use all the money that is allocated in that particular fiscal year. And also, it certainly makes it a lot easier for the landowners and consistent schedule of the program, so we're looking forward to that. Okay, the two important things that we wanted to make sure we included in the legislation, which is in the legislation today, is the ranking. The council workgroup wanted to, and other individuals, wanted to see some small changes to the ranking. So, we're going to increase by that. We're increasing it from 300 to 335 points. The soil score stays the same. The forested land, based on forest potential, that's increased. The cropland and pasture, we stretched out the categories, same point structure, though. We did add forest and tree cover, it's a new section, replaced hydrochol deduction. Development rights, more categories, residential density and commercial. Proximity to priority areas adjustments to reflect area of concerns. And the property size, we added more categories and points for smaller properties in the development envelope. Continuing in the ranking, we protected lands contiguous to the site, no changes. Current soil conservation plans and forest management plans, we updated the language. Land management, you have less points considered in that section considering an ag operation on the property, directly related to the ag assessment. The forest habitat's a new section, it uses a green infrastructure plan that's already approved. And water quality benefits, a new section based on streams on the property. And finally, the special conditions consolidates two previous sections, now a total of 15 points instead of 20, and that's the only points that are awarded by the Ag Preservation Board. Examples would be high risk of loss, young operators, beginning farmers. Okay. Okay, that completes our ranking. Now, into our easement changes, as you know, our biggest thing is how do we factor in all these other zoning categories? And we really like the valuation point system we've used over all these 30-plus years, and we just did some tweaks to it, some added, so I'll go over those. Still the lowest of the three calculations, and the values are based on the average ag value minus any improvements, no matter the zoning. The worksheet changes, development pressure, we revised the development rates section to now include all residential zoning, and we added a section for commercial zone based on acreage. We also added points, increasing the points for high-quality forest soils. We added a new section for the water resources or the minor or major streams. And we did add the final calculations to come up with the final value to the legislation, in the legislation. Okay, now, we'd like to touch base on the location incentive payments, used to be called bonus payments. And as you recall, the last administration, we developed this where it was just two areas in the county. Now, we would like to assign it to the approved master plan, and we're coming up with four areas, and those dollar values are one-time payment based on per acre price besides the formula value or the lesser of the three. Number one would be inside the development envelope. Number two, within a mile of the development envelope, like a green buffer. Areas outside the above and outside of the PPA. And then finally, areas outside the development envelope, including the PPA, that is zoned other than ag or adjacent to such zoning. And you think of the village centers, and you think of those commercial properties that are out there in the middle of the rural area, trying to preserve those areas. And next slide has, shows the map of his examples, the development envelope with the inverted T. Then the gray area is their mile buffer area. The white area showing outside that buffer area but not in the PPA. And then the fourth area would be everything outside the development envelope, as we previously discussed. So. Okay, I'm going to switch it over to Jen to take it from here, and we're going to start off with additions to existing easements.
Thank you, Bill. Previously, we've had this in the code, but it wasn't really a great process. This is for a farm that's already in the easement or a property that's in an easement, and they would like to purchase some land adjacent to it and add it to their existing farm. We've tried to improve the process for those occasions to allow them to erase that development potential on that adjacent property, add it into their easement, and be paid for that, just like it would be for a standalone easement, but they're not competing against everyone. So, again, this was a process we had, just trying to improve it. The next section, agricultural subdivisions, these are after a farm is in the easement, a landowner can request to divide the farm. The property would still be under easement, they can't build any more houses. It's just an ability to create smaller farm parcels. We find that they're hard to manage in the future, but it is an option that's important to some of our landowners, so we wanted to keep it in there. What we've done is raise the minimum size for those parcels that are created. Right now, it's 25 acres. Currently, we're proposing it would be 50 acres for those created pieces. And again, everything would still stay under easement. Boundary line adjustments, again, this is another thing of trying to handle properties after they're in the easement. So, we often have requests to change a property line, whether it be between easement landowners, where they're adjusting, where maybe they thought the property line was always along the fence, but it really isn't. So, trying to adjust those situations. What we're suggesting is that if it's an easement property and an easement property adjusting their boundary, there is no requirement for how much land is exchanged, but if it is an easement property and an adjacent property that's not in easement, that would need to be an equal exchange of land. So, if you're trying to correct, maybe somebody built a shed in the wrong place, and they need to try to fix their property line, we're just asking for an equal land swap in those kind of situations. The section on reports, we talked to the county treasurer and determined a timeframe and what we could have in an annual report, trying to understand what money is available for the next round of offers, and also to try and provide more information to citizens and council and everybody who would be interested on where the money is going, what's come in, and all those things. So, those would be due December 1st of each year. The next section is the districts program. This isn't something we use a lot, but it is still out there. This creates a temporary agreement to not develop your land. These were used more in the 1990s when we didn't have a lot of funds to go around, and this was a nice stepping stone to get people into the program ahead of an actual paid easement. So, we wanted to keep it as an option, but we are keeping it to ag-zoned properties only, and a 50-acre minimum to be eligible. And you'll see some changes throughout that section, but those are updating some language that we've also done under the easement program. So, otherwise, it's staying the same. Everyone's favorite thing, inspections and enforcement. We want to make sure that we are being good stewards of these easements and the money that's been invested in them. So, we're adding a timeframe for when we would be required to inspect our easements, and this would be all of our county easements, trying to visit these farms every five years, and just to make sure that they're still in compliance with the easement agreement, and everybody understands what the easement provisions are. And it also adds some language that ties it to the zoning code's enforcement. And then, the last very simple thing is just creating a program guideline so that we know, we have a policy manual to reference on the day-to-day for administrative stuff. And that's all of those 40 pages in a nutshell.
Much more than the 40 pages in a nutshell. I've been in a lot of those meetings, so appreciate all the time and effort that all of you and your committee worked together, the council workgroup put together. At this time, I'd like to open up to council members for any questions. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank you for the job you've done putting this together. I know we've met several times over the course of probably six to seven months, so that transparency of just learning, you know, the different configurations that are going to change, and I'm supportive of it. I'm supportive, it's a property rights thing. I think it creates that careful balance within our community and our county, so I just want to thank you for all the hard work you and your team have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Janjordana?
Good evening, Bill, Jen. So, my only question is, is do you have people in the pipeline, if you change the process where they have to have everything in by May 1st? Do you have people, and will they have to fill out a new application in order to qualify for that? Or they grandfather them because they're in the pipeline, they fill out an application?
Yeah, they're grandfathered in. And, you know, I think we've been talking to everybody, we're going to do a mailer again and reach out to a bunch of different, anybody who wants us to come speak to any group, please let us know. And we're going to do a mailer, and have a good meeting in April. We're shooting for April, and early, late March, early April, so, yes. Thank you.
How long does it take to do an application? Is it pretty detailed, or?
No, we're pretty.
Ever seeing them, but I just don't know how long it takes to?
We walk you right through it, it's really easy, so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordana. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you, Bill and Jen, for taking the time to meet with me. Last week, we went line by line and spent quite a bit of time together. I appreciate it. I think this is a great bill. I totally support it, and the reduction from the 50 to 20 acres is really good, too. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Yep, just also wanted to thank you and thank our previous council who started this work to get this going. It's very exciting to think that within the development envelope, we may be able to preserve some land. If only it had been lowered to 1/100 of an acre, then my property might be able to qualify, but I still appreciate your help with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, I also want to echo that. I've gotten a number of emails from some of my constituents, and it's probably one of the first bills, I haven't got two different opinions. This opinion, this is a great bill. It was well-written and thoughtfully presents a much more county-wide unification of protection for our land, and they say, well, even keep a lot of us here until we're here on earth any longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do, Mr. President. We have 16 this evening.
Okay, so, with 16 speakers, I want to remind everyone that you have three minutes. And again, please be respectful of each other. Call your first speaker.
Liz Bowman, followed by Quentin Cornwell.
There goes my respect factor, right there. Ms. Bowman, how are you this evening?
Great, thank you very much.
Name and address, please.
Elizabeth Bowman, 3334 Churchville Road, Aberdeen 21001. So, it sounds like I might be singing to the choir tonight. It's great to hear that you're all in support of this bill. My husband and I, Lawrence Bowman, are the proud owners of over 400 acres of preserved farmland, so we really support this effort. And I have to say that it does come with compliance checks, which is fine, but it does. And benefits are larger than the Hartford County community. I'm sure you all know that. I'll just mention a few. Protected home to wildlife, protecting water resources that impact the state, the country, and globally. But it also strengthens community health and wellness by providing visible links to historical and cultural areas that act as a talisman for our area. So, you think of the Chesapeake Bay as the land of pleasant living, right? It's not just a beer slogan. But you think about the Stepping Stone Museum, it's just one example of that. So, we're all for it. I think the reduction to 20 acres is a very, very good idea. So, finally, we'd like to thank Bill Amos again for all of the hard work he's done over many years, and thank you for the people who have, that Bill's worked with to write this bill. Sounds like it's a great, great bill. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes, can I give you my business or my home?
I prefer your home.
I'm a resident of York County, and my address is 57 Covington Drive, Shrewsbury, Pennsylvania, 17361.
Thank you. And your name?
Oh, and I'm Quentin Cornwell.
Thank you.
Actually, I have something prepared, so if you don't mind. Dear President Patrick Van City and distinguished members of the Hartford County Council, as I mentioned, my name is Quentin Cornwell. I'm the district manager of the Hartford Soil Conservation District. I would like to express my support for the updates to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program, as covered in Bill 24-002. Hartford County, as you know, Hartford County has a rich history that is embedded in agriculture. Last year, Hartford County celebrated the 250th anniversary of its founding. As part of this celebration, Hartford County recognized multi-generational farms from 100 years and older. Just like those families and those farms, the Agriculture and Land Preservation Program has helped preserve vital farmland in this county for generations to come. Considerable amount of time and effort by Bill Amos, Jennifer Wilson, and others that were mentioned tonight have invested in preparing the changes, the updates to this bill. Realizing the importance of these updates identified in this bill, Bill and Jennifer shared with our board of supervisors and other agricultural groups the beneficial impacts that this bill will provide to the county throughout this essential program. With the support and approval of the Hartford County Council, Hartford County will strengthen and broaden the county's agricultural land preservation program to preserve more vital farmlands from the potential urban development. By incorporating these proposed updates to the county agricultural land program, ranking and pricing of farms will credit those farms with soil and water conservation plans. and pricing of farms will credit those farms with soil and water conservation plans as well as assigning points for stream and forest coverage. Harford County District, along with our state and federal partners, will do our part to enhance soil health and water quality on these preserved land farms through our soil and water conservation plans. Thank you for your consideration, support and your consideration for vote in favor and of this important legislative bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sandy Magnus, followed by Chuck Miesan.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Sandy Magnus, Bel Air. Our farm is in mouth and we really respect the preservation of all the farms. More recently, we have been trying to purchase another farm and I was glad to see that when we finally got the bill finalized, that every five years they're going to be inspected because the farm that we, the last farm we put in a bid on, it had not been taken care of. Consequently, the family had never been farming it since the grandfather had died. So I was glad to see that the inspection is at least going to come in and at least we're going to know that we're not only preserving them, but we're also keeping them in a livable condition. The second thing is farms around us, and this is going to affect our values, for the farms that you're going to be looking at coming into the program. A farm on Forge Hill was recently sold to an Amish family. He's not living there, but he is renting it out to another Amish family. I have nothing against the Amish community, but I want you to understand that when you sell them to an Amish, you're not going to be able to retrieve them and put them back into the farm families that have worked in this county. There was another one sold right up the road from us. It has also been sold to Amish. I have recently today been told by another individual that there has been another farm that has been sold and the purchaser there again has been the Amish. So I think the Amish that have been paying anywhere from 20,000 to 40,000 an acre for their properties in York and Lancaster are moving in on us. And that's great, but the problem is, once they buy them, they move them from one family to another to another. So we are going to be losing some of our farms that have been in families for 100 years. So I just want to say, I support this bill. I think it's great. I think it gives us a lot more versatility. We had a farm in Bel Air and it was in the development envelope and we were told that we could not put it in ag preservation at the time. So I'm glad to see that some changes are being made and for the positive. So Bill, Jen, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, council. Chuck Miesan, 1812 Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen. I'm here to support Bill 24002 as well. And since it sounds like we have pretty good support on the council, I'm going to spare you some time. And I just would like to say thank you, first of all, to everybody. If there's anybody in this room that has a farm that's in this program, please stand up and be recognized because it's such a wonderful, wonderful thing. And also the folks in this room that have been part of this program, please. Chad, I know a lot. Everyone up here. Anyone else in the audience been a part of this? Come on, don't be shy. Stand up, please.
Chuck, just hold on just a minute. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Mr. Tibbs?
Thank you so much, everybody. So I'm going to skip most of this because, like I said, we have great support. I just want to really close, have a closing paragraph. And this bill, 24002, represents not just a piece of legislation, but a testament to our collective dedication to preserving the essence of our rural communities and ensuring a sustainable future for agriculture in our county. Together, let us embrace this opportunity to forge a path forward to a more vibrant, resilient, and inclusive agricultural landscape for all of us and all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lee Maddox, followed by Kristen Kirkwood.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. Lee Maddox, 1700 Church Point Court, Perryman. I'm here to testify in support of Bill 24002. During the past year, I have been involved with my community as citizen scientists who have researched and documented the host of environmental injustices existing in Perryman, which is located in the development envelope. The current valuation point system and easement priority ranking systems have caused harm to Perryman and to other communities within the development envelope. The harms are many and I will not go through them tonight. You can read our report, Turning the Tide, at protectperryman.com. I am encouraged by the updates to the easement priority rankings and the valuation point systems to adjust rankings to provide higher rankings for forested areas and land inside the development envelope. I urge you all to pass this thoughtful legislation without harmful amendments designed to put, to gut the intent of the bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Kirkwood. My address is 2603 Braden Ball Road, Whitehall. Council members and Council President Vincenti, I'm speaking with you tonight as the executive director of the Harford Land Trust. We are Harford County's only countywide land preservation nonprofit organization. Harford Land Trust strongly supports this bill introduced tonight. As Bill noted, the land trust spent hundreds of hours with the working group and Bill and Jen and the various community groups, looking at the program, making recommendations, and socializing this bill. In the United States, we lose roughly 150 acres of natural land and 400 acres of farmland every hour. And once this land is gone, we can't get it back. The recently released 2022 Census of Agriculture reported that in Maryland, we have a reduction of over 1,200 acres of farmland over the past five years. But interestingly, despite this decline, the state witnessed a rise in the number of farms, which underlines the resilience and expansion of small and first-generation farms. The census reports that the median size of a farm in Harford County is only 27 acres. And in fact, over the past two censuses, which is 10 years, 65% of the farms that generate $1,000 or more of revenue in this county are under 50 acres. These data illustrate the importance of the proposed modifications to Harford County's program. To achieve our master plan goal of preserving 75,000 acres, we need to expand the eligibility to include these smaller farms. In fact, there are few properties greater than 200 acres that remain unpreserved, which means that our preservation efforts must depend on more transactions with smaller acreage landowners. Farms in Harford County are oftentimes a mixed landscape. We're very different than the eastern shore. Our farms have fields, pastures, forests, streams, wetlands, and a lot more. While our land preservation program has always served to protect all of these natural assets, these program changes introduced provide value for the forests and waterways in the application and ranking easement valuation. The American Farmland Trust, which is the preeminent farmland preservation research group, projects Harford County to lose nearly 10,000 acres of land to low-density residential housing by 2040. With every acre that's lost to development, we wipe out family farms, destroy wildlife habitat, and rob future generations of access to nature. We need to understand that growth and land development are not synonyms. Land preservation in this program specifically is our best tool for addressing these problems. We can ensure that our agricultural industry is thriving while also avoiding haphazard sprawl. In addition to the nearly $1 billion in annual economic activity created from Harford County agriculture, forestry, and the related businesses, land preservation creates a host of other economic opportunities and quality of life factors. In closing, the Harford Land Trust strongly encourages the council to approve this bill. It is one of our best investments that we can make for the future of Harford County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Amy O'Neil, 103 East Jarrettsville Road in Forest Hill. President of the Council Vincenti and members of the council. Speaking to the choir is very, I'm very pleased to hear all the support for this legislation and I'm here to echo what many have said before me, that this is a well-crafted, a well-fought-through piece of legislation and all of those who worked to prepare it are to be commended. And the fact that you as our council have taken the time to recognize the value of this legislation is also to be commended. I do recommend and urge you to approve this legislation and echo the sentiments of many in this community to thank all of the, those who crafted it and all of those who will work to continue in our preservation efforts throughout Harford County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. James Thomas, 2019, Foston Road. I am very pleased to see that amendment where they're reducing the acreage minimum because like we've heard, there are many, many farms left in Harford County, but not many of those larger size. And myself, as a beginning farmer, I can't afford those larger farms. But with the opportunity to purchase a smaller farm, to continue to farm and using the land preservation money to be able to pay for that farm and continue my family's farming legacy, that's, that's huge. Just wanted to say, please support this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
David Milton, followed by Robert Tibbs.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
David Milton, 3149 Desford Road in Darlington. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their focus on this bill and I definitely do support it as well. And I thought I would just give my perspective as a neighbor to, to farms actually that are in preservation. My property on my north border is in the mouth program and on the south border, it's in rural legacy. I purchased my property in Darlington in 2007 and one of the considerations during that time was the adjoining farm that was currently in, in the program that I had told you. This farm was sold in 2019 and over the last five years, I've witnessed a tremendous amount of commercial development on this property. Some under the guise of agrainment and agritourism. Others were straight-up commercial events, fundraisers, all through the clever, clever use of ongoing special event permits issued by the county. This has drastically changed the nature of our community, our property values, due to traffic, noise, and destruction of wildlife habitat. It is reassuring to see here that there is a compliance and enforcement consideration in this bill. So that's very heartening to me. But the one thing that I thought was missing that you might want to consider is in your definitions and how you're going to handle agrainment and agritourism. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Bob Tibbs, 3545 Old Level Road, Haverty Grace. Members of the county council, I stand before you in favor of Bill 24002. I was a small part-
I like to double 07.
I was a small part of this committee that worked on this legislation for over two years. Bill and Jen spent many hours and did many scenarios for this legislation. They presented it to, before any civic organization or agricultural committee that desired to have input, even the council at different times so that, so as not to have all of you present at the same time. Many ideas were talked about and thought through. Finally, after two years, it is now before you. I wish this bill was law 15 years ago. When Bill Thorpe and I sat in the kitchen of Mrs. Eugene Pope's, her farm was placed in the development envelope through comprehensive rezoning and she did not like it. She said she did not want to see houses on her farm. Her past, her husband had passed away a few years prior to our visit. She said that she had no, that he had said, quote, "No houses on this farm." We told her we would try to do what was in our thoughts, but we told her that it was highly unlikeable because she was in the development envelope. Before we left, she told us that she had an aneurysm in her aorta and that could rupture at any time. She felt that she didn't have much time left and she wanted us to do what we could, but quote, "Be quick about it." Mrs. Pope's died several weeks later. She didn't get her farm in preservation. Some 10 years or more later, Presbyterian Homes purchased the farm for a retirement community. We all know what happened to that. I understand that the county has now purchased part of that farm and I think that Mrs. Pope's finally got her wish, that new houses will be built on that farm, only schools. Please pass this bill for Mrs. Pope's and many other families that are in this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbs.
Brianna Coleman, followed by Ken Shannon.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Coleman, 2347 Ingle Road in Foston. That was really moving, so thank you. I'm here to, tonight to express my support for Bill 24002. Mr. Amos gave a beautiful and informative presentation at the Foston Community Meeting last week and shared some history about this program and it sounds like Harford County leads the way in their approach to land preservation. Expanding this program through the changes proposed in this legislation makes sense and will benefit our entire county for generations to come. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Amos and the many others who have helped make this program what it is today. This is an example of a well-thought-out and well-written bill. I hope some of you were taking notes. What a welcome surprise to hear the council's united and unanimous support of this bill with no amendments that change the intent of the bill, of course. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Good evening, sir. Name and address?
Good evening. Ken Shannon, 2044 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. I'm here to speak in favor of Bill 24002 tonight. Specifically, I'm glad to see that includes property not zoned ag and reduces the property size requirements from 50 to 20 acres. As someone who lives in the development zone, I'm very glad to see that points are being added in the evaluation for smaller properties in the development envelope. I thank all the people who have worked so hard on this bill and I'm glad that the council supports the bill. We should go a long way to keeping space open in Harford County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ed Grimmel, followed by Kimmy Doran.
Good evening, sir. Name and address?
Ed Grimmel, 3859 Frederick Holt Road, Jarrettsville, Maryland. I've attended many of the meetings, had a little input on this. It's really tweaking a good system to a better system. I have many farms preserved in Harford County and York County, total over 1,000 acres. I have an application in for another one in Harford County to be looked at, another one in York County. Many times I've been asked by neighbors, they'd like to get into the program, but their acres are too small. They can piggyback now or enter their acres. It's very good for everybody. I'm in favor of this bill. It's, ag preservation has allowed me to purchase farms that were in at affordable price, farms that weren't in. Contact Mr. Amos or, or Jen and tell you what it's, the value is. It's a great program for anybody to purchase land, you know, and put it in a program which is preserved forever. And I hope you all have any questions about it. Bill and Jen can answer. And I challenge each one of you to bring a farm in. Go talk to your people in your district. Bring some more farms in. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address?
Kimmy Doran, 1555 Kerr-
Kimmy Doran, 1555 Kerr Road, Whiteford. Mr. Council President and council members, this statement is on behalf of Harford County Farm Bureau in support of Bill 24-002 and also I represent Maryland Farm Bureau as the District Four Director. I am a third generation farmer in Whiteford. My family raises beef cattle fed by our own hay and grain, which are then sold in our on-farm market and to local restaurants around Harford County. Ag preservation allows for people in, in unique circumstances to allow their land into ag preservation so that it can be preserved for years to come. So even if your great grandkids don't want to continue the family farm, someone will be able to farm and provide for our community on the land we once farmed and provided for. According to the USDA Census report that was released, Maryland has lost over 12,000 acres of farmland in the last five years. It roughly takes a half an acre to two acres of farmland to feed one person for one year. Using the averages, we lost the ability to feed 12,000 people in Maryland in five years. A 2023 report from the USDA shows there is a little less than 2 million acres of farmland left in Maryland. To refrain from losing more farmland and continuing to feed Harford County, Maryland and our country, we need to preserve as much farmland as possible. Preserving farmland allows for food security and local food supply and a good agricultural economy. Food security has been an increasingly aware problem and efforts to retain our food security through politics has been a top priority for both the local and the state farm bureau. Even with losing acres of farmland, the market value of agricultural products sold has increased to $70,215 on average per farm. A large portion of this is likely due to the increased demand of buying local. Harford County has done a great job of promoting local food supply with on-farm markets, farmers markets, local restaurants, supporting local farmers and promotive events highlighting our local farmers. We have also done a great job of preserving our larger farms, but now it is time to preserve the smaller ones. The USDA Census says the majority of Maryland farms are between 10 and 179 acres. I chose to speak more on the statistics and facts of Maryland farming because I believe this council knows what farming means to our coun, to our county and community based on your appearance at our farm fairs, auctions, banquets, farm visitations and fundraisers. However, it is hard to ignore that the farms the people in this room grew up on are the reason we have become the people we are today. Farming is more than a business as the dictionary describes it. It is a lifestyle that we all chose to live and one we hope to pass on to generations next. The story of family farming underscores a legacy of sustainability. For those reasons, Harford County Farm Bureau and Maryland Farm Bureau support Bill 24-002. We also wanted to thank you for your previous and future support as well as Bill and Jen for bringing this bill before us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Glenn Dutter, followed by Sally Labar.
Good evening, sir. Name and address?
Good evening, council. Glenn Dutter, 1806 Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen, 21001. As you are aware, I'm sure, that the components necessary to create wealth are land, labor and capital. You may not agree with the proposition however, that undeveloped land also contributes to environmental stability and our pursuit of happiness, which also create wealth. If you can't accept that proposition, try this. Talk to somebody from Chicago or New York and tell them that the parkland along the water and in the central part of those cities should be developed for a higher and better use. Be prepared to run. Likewise, many private landowners of farm, forest, wetlands attribute great value to the natural beauty of their land, their heritage of that land and the hope of leaving it as a legacy to their family and community. In a survey I conducted 20 years ago at workshops, private landowners across the northeast, overwhelming of the landowners chose natural beauty and leaving a legacy as important reasons for ownership. Economic return usually ranked about fifth or sixth of 20 choices. Here in Harford County, I conducted similar workshops for about five years and the landowners told me that the political and social changes around their land was, was making preserving their use problematic. Therefore, please pass Bill number 24002 to allow private landowners of all types of undeveloped land the opportunity to preserve the use of that land as they highly value that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please?
Hey, Sally Labar and I'm here on behalf of Friends of Harford to make a statement in support of the Bill 24-002. Friends of Harford supports this bill very strongly. The adjustments to the Agricultural Preservation Program offer land preservation opportunities that benefit the entire county. The bill holds the potential to reduce suburban sprawl by protecting open spaces and wetlands and forest canopy, wildlife and habitat corridors through land easements. Consequently, there are additional benefits including a decrease in the demand for extra community services, services such as schools and police and libraries and other facilities that would be necessary if these lands were to undergo development. We recommend the entire county council vote in support of this legislation. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Labar, did you give your address? I missed it if you did.
Sorry, I didn't.
Thank you.
Friends of Harford, P.O. Box 294 Abingdon, Maryland 21009.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Dixon?
There is no one else, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this will conclude this public hearing, but I want to thank each and every one of you for your comments. I want to thank Bill and Jen again, Shabita for the presentation this evening. And I want to thank all of those council committee members, Mr. Schroeds, Mr. Tibbs, Mr. Grimmel, Ms. Kirkwood. I mean, on and on and on. Thank you all for coming and participating. Thank you. This will adjourn this public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dixon, I mean, Mr. Kearney, we're going to take a quick recess. Good evening, Chair. Calls are ordered. Legislative session day 24-008. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Guthrie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we pray to give you thanks for all in authority as this is God's command to believe everybody believes today. Praying for our leaders is God's plan and the purpose of our nation. Help us make decisions that are in the best interest of our county and its people. We ask that you lift up those who are suffering whether physically, financially or emotionally and fill them with your comfort. We humble ourselves before you this evening in this council chamber. We seek your wisdom, understanding and knowledge with the peace of God which suppresses all understanding and guards with our heart and mind, Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen. Amen. There you go, Ms. Dixon. I was going to get you clear of that. Number four, presentation of proclamations, we have none. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments and nominations, we have none. Six, special presentations, none. Seven, approval of minutes. Amended legislative day 24-005, February 5th, 2024. Legislative day 24-007, February 20th, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Resolution 006-24.
A resolution introduced by Council President Vincenti. A resolution authorizing police officers as defined under the Criminal Procedures 10 article of the Maryland Annotated Code, parentheses Criminal Procedures article, to go or be sent beyond 11...
That's just the line numbers.
No. The boundaries of Harford County to assist correctional centers within the state of Maryland in 12 emergency situations. Whereas 2-105B of the Criminal Procedures article provides that by legal enactment, a governing body of a county may determine the circumstances under which police officers and/or other officers, agents and employees of the county, together with all necessary equipment, may lawfully go or be sent beyond the boundaries of county. And whereas Section 2-101(c) 10 and 11 of the Criminal Procedures article of the Annotated Code define a police officer as the sheriff of a county whose useful duties include making arrests or a regular employee deputy sheriff of a county who is compensated by the county and whose usual duties include making arrests. And whereas it is the public interest, the correctional agencies throughout the state of Maryland cooperate effectively and efficiently to provide professional correctional services. And whereas correctional officers in Harford, Cecil, Kent, Queen Anne's, Caroline Counties preside over correctional facilities within their respective jurisdictions. And whereas correctional officers are aware that emergency situations may develop in their respective counties and that in such situations assistance from neighboring correctional agencies may enhance the rendering of prompt effective and professional services to the public. And whereas, to the extent authorized under Section 2-101(c) 10 and 11 and 2-105B of the Criminal Procedures article, Harford County endorses the partnership between the above named counties to ensure prompt effective and professional services during emergency situations with a partner county's correctional facility. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the county council of Harford County, Maryland pursuant to the authorization provided in Section 2-101(c) 10, 11 and 2-105B of the Criminal Procedures article that the Harford County Sheriff and/or Warden in an enumerated partnering jurisdiction that has requested assistance may upon determination that an emergency situation exists and to the extent personnel and equipment are available, provide resources to that jurisdiction and be it further resolved that the county executive is hereby requested to endorse this resolution, thereby indicating approval, therefore. Resolutions 006-24 Correctional Agencies Mutual Aid Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. This resolution will be considered this evening. So may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 006-24 Correctional Agencies Mutual Aid Agreement.
May I have second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman?
Yes.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 006-24. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, Resolution 006-24 is hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Bill 24-008 into the record.
Bill 24-008 Fire Lanes Introduced by Council President Vincenti at the Request of County Executive Gasley. An act to repeal and reenact with Amendment Section 244-6, Designation of Article II Fire Lanes of, of Chapter 244, Vehicles and Traffic to, of the Harford County Code as amended to provide that the Department of Emergency Services and the Department of Inspections, Licensing and Permits shall develop regulations for the establishment of fire lanes to provide for civil and criminal penalties pursuant to Section 1-23, General Penalty of Article II Miscellaneous of Chapter 1 General Provisions of the Harford County Code as amended for violation of this section to correct a spelling error within Section 244-7, Authority to Remove Obstructions, Charges of Article II Fire Lanes of Chapter 244, Vehicles and Traffic of the Harford County Code as amended and generally relating to fire lanes. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 at 7:15 p.m. in East Council Chambers. Mr. Kearney, I'd like to add my name to this bill as well.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Public hearing scheduled for April 2nd, 2024, 7:15 in East Council Chambers.
Thank you. Agenda number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 24-001, Mr. Penman?
Mr. President, I request to withdraw Bill 24-001. I want to thank everyone. There's many people here that have provided some valuable input. I want to thank the colleagues on the council as well. Obviously, the bill is not there. We have some things to discuss. And once we discuss them, we'll decide whether it gets reintroduced or not. So thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Number 12, enrollment of bills, we have none. 13, unfinished business, none. 14, unfinished, or excuse me, 14 new business, none. 17, comments and input from attending citizens, Ms. Dixon? Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. Mr. President, we have three this evening. Matt Vargo, followed by Katie Gonano.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please?
Good evening. Matt Vargo, I currently reside at 211 Glenwood Road, but as of tomorrow, I'll actually be moving to 2531 Easy Street in Foston. I was asked to speak tonight in regards to an issue I had with building 2531 Easy Street. On August 16th, my wife Lauren and I closed on the lot there, the new Armour Village development. The buying process went relatively smooth, picked out the house, you know, everything went, like I said, relatively smooth. Sold our home in Abingdon and then ended up having to move in with my mother and father-in-law, Antoinette and John Mercer. We had everything lined up. We were ready to go, just waiting for war communities to break ground. We were very eager to do so, as was Ward. But after about a week, nothing had really happened. So after several emails back and forth with Ward, I had no real answers as to why we didn't break ground our house. So September 6th, I decided to start making calls on my own to different departments within the county. I was told to start with Department of Public Works because that's where I was told the building permit was being held up. After I talked to them, I was told that there was no application for that address at all. Same thing with Sewer and Water, Departments of Inspections, Licenses and Permitting, didn't have anything for that address either. So I decided to call Mr. Yuler, who is the developer for Armour Village. He informed me there was a road improvement scheduled or to be done before the development even started. And that was at the corner of Record Road and Bella Road. Turns out, the county was holding up my building permit because this road improvement wasn't finished. So after I got that information, I reached out to the county executive's office to plead my case. Several emails went back and forth between myself, the county executive's office, and I really got nowhere. I kept in communication with Mr. Yuler and eventually became middleman to try and get this issue resolved so I could start building my house. Really, the only message I got back from the county executive office was we must hold the developer accountable. I would normally agree with this statement, but in this case, it made zero sense to me. The development was about 95% completed. I was actually the 85th of 87 homes. Mr. Yuler already made the majority of his money on that project, so holding him accountable, it really didn't affect him at all, affect him at all. Mr. Yuler said it himself, it had zero effect on him. Really, the only person that was affected by this was myself, my family. We basically were extended three months to actually break ground on the house. We were paying interest on our construction loan. It ended up costing me about $2,500 in additional payments. It took a lot out of my family, myself, like, you know, putting up, you know, my in-laws putting up with us for an extra three months and two toddlers. That was very difficult. Thankfully, we got everything squared away, but yeah, the actions of the, of the county to delay my building permit was, again, it was very difficult for my family and myself and it was for-
If, if I may, I'm going to stop you right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Put your times up. But Mr. Richardson, are you catching all this?
Steve, yeah, I feel we're done.
Got it. Thank you.
He'll, he'll meet with you after.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next caller? I'm the next speaker.
Katie Gonano.
Good evening. Name and address?
Hello, council. Katie Gonano, 23, 20 Franklin's Chance Court, Foston, Maryland 21047. Good evening. Thank you. Maryland, two ten four seven. Good evening. Thank you all. I was not expecting that. Thank you. Thank you to the members of the council who truly care about not only stakeholders, but constituents in their districts, real people dedicated to their communities, and don't, I'm going to skip a part there. We the people should be the real stakeholders of neighborhoods and districts as a whole, period. I skipped a few parts. I did not expect the meeting to go like it did earlier, but I'm happy about that. I hear the words stakeholders and constituents tossed around a lot in these chambers, and it's funny because while the words are similar, the roots of their meanings are different. A stakeholder as defined by Merriam-Webster's dictionary cross-reference with Wikipedia and a thesaurus that I have state, a stakeholder can be defined as, one, a person entrusted with the stakes of betters; two, one that has a stake in an enterprise; three, one involved or affected by a course of action. Note, a stake being defined as an interest or a share in an undertaking or enterprise. I want you to think about that last part. Synonyms of stakeholder are claim, interest, share, and I will not share all of the verbs, no pun intended, well, because they sound far less like people than the nouns. Stakeholder, the verb means words such as capitalize, fund, and endow, to name a few. While as a constituent is defined as a member of a constituency pledged to help their elderly constituents, or in our case, local government divided into geographical zones; two, an essential part, a component, an element, organic constituents of plants, animals, and microorganisms; three, one who authorizes another to act as an agent or principal; four, serving to form, compose, or make up a unit as a whole. Synonyms including, building block, a component, an element, a factor, an ingredient, a member. I like that last one, a member, being a member of something. That's what we're supposed to be, right? A member of our community, and you all are supposed to be representing us in our districts. Mr. Penman? A constituent sounds much more like an organic, much more organic to me than a stakeholder, doesn't it? Erin, I would like you to think about more of us in District B, and less about your stakeholders, even if a small minority lives in District B. My neighbors and I keep coming here, and I saw, you know, Perryman leaving on the way, and we're turning into broken records with our legitimate concerns over overdevelopment, and still some of you fail to address our stressed infrastructure. Please stop. Stop the nonsense with our other government officials. Focus more on your constituents, us. Let me be clear, we do not want excess development. Let me also be clear, we will not back down. We need stronger infrastructure prior to more builds, and that's that. Council, please help us with building moratoriums and schools. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, ma'am.
Dale Livingston.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Dale Livingston, nineteen oh eight Angleside Road, Fallston. When I arrived, I handed reports for each one of you for your thoughts about our voting system in Maryland, which affects all counties. This report has been sent to the State Board of Elections and each local board of elections, as well as the state representatives and delegates. This report, as stated on the first page, is meant to assist with the restoration of faith in our Maryland election process. I'm presenting this report to you this evening because whether or not you think the election system in Maryland is having any issues, or that you as councilmen and women have little to say in our election system, every voice counts in the efforts to make sure we have fair, accurate, secure, and trusted election systems. Your input into what's happening in Maryland elections is as important as any other elected official anopolis. Currently, there are a few bills being sponsored concerning very important issues that will affect the system, and in doing so, also all candidates and current elected officials. For example, State Bill ten fifty-two concerns record retention of election material. While this may be not a popular topic to discuss, it will make a difference in the aftermath of an election. The records the local boards must keep are important for every candidate and politician who may have questions about their election results. We have already seen that some of the audits across the state were not performed in the most expeditious and comprehensive manner, which can be detrimental to the voters, the candidates, not to mention the process and the public trust level in that process. In the executive summary, that's, I think, on the third page of the report, you'll find very interesting and somewhat alarming data. This data is directly from the State Board of Elections. This is not made up. As you can see, the State Board, there were over seventy-five thousand registration violations, over sixty-two thousand voting violations in the two thousand and twenty-two general, and twenty-seven thousand violations in the two thousand and twenty-two general election. All counties were victims of this, these anomalies. There were also many discrepancies in data between the county's information and the state's information. They just don't add up. Therefore, there is a reason for this report. I sincerely hope you give this information the time it deserves to get a better understanding of why those of us across Maryland are intent on cleaning up Maryland elections. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
All right, with no other public speakers, we'll go to business from council members. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Debbie Shriver, RN, there's Debbie back there. She reminded me of something I wanted to report this month, that this is March's Choracal Cancer Awareness Month. The CDC recommends screening at age forty-five unless a person has a family of history of cancer. About one hundred and five thousand people are diagnosed with colon cancer each year. This disease can be deadly, but doctors say it is preventable with proper screening and treatable if detected early. And you're looking at somebody that that happened to, and I may not be sitting here if I hadn't gotten a colonoscopy on a timely basis, found out there was cancer in my colon, that they had to cut out about eight to ten inches last November of my colon, and it had, and the pad, the stuff that was in there that they cut out, was tier-two cancer. And if I hadn't, and I had no feeling of that whatsoever, no problems, I just was going in for a regular colonoscopy, and if I would have passed that up, I, you know, it would have gotten constantly worse and may not be here. Last Saturday, I attended the Leading Women of Tomorrow, along with Councilman Penman and County Executive Casely, and honored the Leading Women of Tomorrow. They're all high school students, and the two out of my district, Tracy Komeyung, she was nominated, and she's a senior who maintains a four-point-seven-five grade point average in Joppa Town High School. She's a member of the National Honor Society. She's head of the swim club. Tracy's among the first graduating class of Joppa Town Pathways and Technology Early High School program, and will obtain an associate's degree before graduating from high school. She'll already go into college with associate degree. And also, Kelsey Laren Myers, she's a senior at the International Baccalaureate Program in Edgewood High School. That's one of the highest recognized programs in the United States. She maintains a four-point-four-five grade point average. She serves as treasurer of the National Honor Society, is a member of Capus Social Studies Honor Society, Vice President of Inauguration International Leadership Team. She also serves as a student page during the Maryland General Assembly right now, and is interested in public policy. She intends to pursue a career in international politics. There was about ten or eleven ladies all honored, one from each one of the high schools in our county, and we sure have to be proud of some of these young people who are coming up. They're going to be the people of the future in our county, and we certainly need to be proud of them. We had, last night, we had our annual, or monthly, I should say, community meeting at the Southern Precinct Station, and we certainly had a nice crowd. Kristen Kirkwood, which is still here, I see her. She was our guest speaker and told us all about the issues that are going on in, both in Joppa Town and Edgewood, about land preservation. We just did one hundred and twenty-nine acres in Joppa Town and about ninety-eight acres in Edgewood. They're going to make them both parks, so we're very happy about that. Also, Terry Hanley was there, and so was Joe Slisca from Chief, he's Deputy Chief of Staff, and they were both there and presented, Terry presented a thing about parks and recs and everything that's happening in the southern part of the county. And also, Hal Ashman was there. He is CEO of Ultimate Water Sports, and unfortunately, he's been affected by the fact that the Joppa Town Marina is closing according to MarineMax. They're shutting it down as of March one, and he's there all summer long with all his boogie boards and the stuff you, you know, you run around on water with, and he's very unhappy because he thought he had a three-year contract with the marina there, but they're shutting it down. So we're trying to work with them, and the county's trying to work with him also. We think we might be able to continue that right there at the Mariner Point Marina, because there is an area right there where boats can be put in and out, and I think we can keep that going. And he's a great guy. He does a lot of things with underprivileged children in the county, and we certainly want to keep him in our county. Also, we had the grand opening, I don't know, at the, we had the Edgewood Joppa Town Community Advisory Board meeting at the Southern Precinct, and that was one of the largest meetings we've had in some time. So with that, Mr. President, that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. And Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been approached by community and business stakeholders who reported unfair practices and conflicts of interest in the fulfillment of zoning approvals in County Executive's administration. After receiving the information, I researched and verified the concerns. As a co-equal branch of government, it is our job to ask important questions and report improper actions when we discover them. Therefore, I reported the conflict to the State Prosecutor's Office. Once Mr. Casely was made aware that his actions were discovered, he attacked me on the Hartford County Government Page for exposing the conflict of interest, and then attempted to distract community members by alleging that I am violating the law, serving on the council as a member of the Hartford County Sheriff's Office, and I'll, more to come on that here in a moment. Considering the County Executive's recent media release, I believe it is important to present the facts of the conflict of interest in the real estate plot in question. At a time when permits and developments have slowed or stalled for the average business in Hartford County, which was here testified tonight, it appears that is not the case for the development property of the Casely Company registered to Bob Casely's personal address. The preliminary plot was submitted on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three for Belkamp Heights by Wilson, Deegan, and Associates Incorporated on behalf of Joe Casely. This is the same Joe Casely the County Executive attempted to appoint to the Hartford County Ethics Board, but decided to withdraw his name when he learned that he would not be, he would be denied by the County Council. The purpose of the plot was to revise the previously recorded plot by eliminating Casely Court, reducing and reconfiguring several lots to revise the minimal building setbacks and eliminating the drainage and utility easements. When completing most preliminary plot plans, the designer, developer, owner must submit a site plan, application guided by a checklist. The extensive checklist includes requirements elements such as forest conservation plans, forest and delineation, contour lines depicting grade, well location, perk tests, and proposed stormwater management systems. These critical development elements must be incorporated in the actual preliminary site plan. However, on the Casely Company plot, none of those features are depicted. While the Hartford County Department of Public Works and Health Department authorized an abbreviated process for the Casely property, other nearly identical non-Casely projects and plans have not been afforded the same advantage of the abbreviated process. Following the expedited approval process on November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty days after the submission of the preliminary plan and thirteen working days, Bob Casely's signature was the last approval for the newly recorded Casely Company plot, again, registered to County Executive's home address. Due to conflict of interest, it is important, it is improper, and unprecedented for a county executive to sign this document. I brought this document. Down here is a signature, a signature of Robert Casely. This is the plot Casely Company with his address, and that craster, Joe Casely. Notice that you see on here, you don't see any forest delineation marks. You don't see any contour lines. You don't see any of it. Mr. Cassie would have you believe that the Director Administration signed the executive signature on his behalf. The interesting consideration here is why would the Director Administration forge Mr. Casely's name and not sign his own? By Mr. Casely's own admission, it was a conflict of interest for him to sign the form, so why would the Director Administration sign his name on the document? In addition, either Mr. Cassie provided Director Administration permission to sign his name on his own property plot, furthering the conflict of interest, or the Director Administration forged a signature, and neither circumstance should be acceptable. On December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, Amy O'Neal of O'Neal Enterprises Reality, Realty, excuse me, listed the newly incomplete recorded plot for sale. In the listing remarked, "Three approved newly recorded home sites, builder opportunity for family complex, no HOAs, no builder tie-ins, no restrictions." Another concerning conflict is this listing agent, Amy O'Neal, is Bob Casely's newly appointed member of the Hartford County Planning Advisory Board. Ironically, as the approval process of this property became scrutinized, the property was temporarily removed from the market. These actions are in violation of the Maryland State Ethics Laws that clearly prohibit these conflicts of interest. Maryland Annotated Code General Provisions five dash five oh one through five dash five oh nine specifically prohibit any employee or official from participating in matters in which they have an interest. This prohibition also applies where an officials or employees, relatives, spouse, children, brother, sister, or parents, or certain entities have an interest. The Casely Administration has repeatedly abused the oath of office of the County Executive, and this is yet another example of abuse of power and misconduct in office. To cast revenge for advocating for transparency in our government, the County Executive has yet again retaliated against my legal ability to serve and perform my duties, both as a legislator and in public safety, as a member of the Hartford County Sheriff's Office. This frustrating aspect of this is that it's already been decided on every possible level of county, of our government. I'll walk you through a couple of those. This is the Maryland State Supreme Court ruling from the Jacob Bennett case, where it lists the Hartford County Sheriff's Office similar to the Board of Education, withholding my right to serve here as a councilman and also a member of the Sheriff's Office. The County Executive's or his law office requested the Attorney General submit an opinion. The Attorney General's opinion is right here. The Attorney General says, "You need to go to the Maryland State Ethics Board because we don't have purview." So prior to that, way prior to that, in October, I requested the Maryland State Ethics Board to review my case. In that review, the Ethics Board said, "You have complied with the relevant sections of the public ethics laws. Based on all these factors, the commission granted you an exception to the secondary employment strict prohibition to allow your secondary employment with the Hartford County Council." So again, it was upheld. The Hartford County Ethics Board was also reviewed this case in November. When they reviewed the case in November, they said they do not have the authority to weigh in on this topic. Now, once again, the County Executive has requested the Hartford County Ethics Board review this case, and what they're advising is, or requesting, an advisory option, whether Councilman Penman's employment disqualifies him from serving on a legislative body that approves the budget for the Hartford County Sheriff's approves the budget for the Hartford County Sheriff's Office, which is also his employer, whether Councilman Penman should remain in office but be disqualified from voting on the county budget overall, whether Councilman Penman should be disqualified from voting on the Sheriff's Office budget only. So while it's very clear, we can have teachers and deputies serve as legislators, Mr. Cassely cannot accept this and has again chose to challenge the court's decision on no merits. To make matters worse, Mr. Cassely has now broken the code by filing the legal request for advisory opinion from the Hartford County Ethics Board concerning the simultaneous employment as a sworn member of the Sheriff's Office and a member of the county council. The county Ethics Board code makes it clear that elected officials can only request opinions related to their own issues or conduct, not that afforded to an elected official. In addition, the request by the county executive was sent by the county law department, which is the same county law department that provides legal guidance for the county Ethics Board. Furthermore, the code clearly states that the complaints or opinions shall be treated confidentially. But as we all have seen, Mr. Cassely politicized this issue when he publicly released the accusations and the instructions for his Ethics Department to investigate. In addition, the Ethics Board also have it listed on their website, so there's no confidentiality there. I say his Ethics Board because it's apparent that he may have weaponized, in addition, that the county executive's appointed the members of the Hartford County Ethics Board and their chair, who has donated three thousand dollars to the Cassely campaign over the last two years. This is clearly an unethical request in relationship between the executive, the law department, and the county Ethics Board, and I'm sure they're likely to reason on such matters on whatever he wants. While I'm not surprised by Mr. Cassely's unethical, unethical and bizarre behavior, his continual attacks on law enforcement and destruction is causing Hartford County and its hardships, and it's, and it's sad. Moving on. On a more positive note. Some months ago, myself and members of the school board, Dr. Bullson, the superintendent of the board, parents, community members, began a, a process to evaluate, have a policy built to evaluate selection of school library books. After several months of discussions, meetings, we have a working product. This working product is here. This working product will be released on the Board of Education's site tomorrow. So, we are looking for input. This is just another step along the way. Once we get that input, the group will meet again and then readdress some of those concerns. And also, I want to acknowledge Officer Zach, Zachary Miller and his loss from the Bel Air. He was a patriot, a public safety servant, and he will be missed. With that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Janjordana?
Thank you, Council President. I'd also like to offer my condolences to the Officer Zach, Zachary Miller, who passed away on February twenty-eighth due to medical emergency. He, he actually marked forty-three years of service with the Bel Air Police Department, and he will be, he will be missed. On a personal note, I had a very good friend, Dotsey DeGenaro, who passed away about a week ago. She had some heart issues. I've known her since she was six years old. She took care of both my aunt and uncle all the time. She was always very giving, wonderful lady, and just devastating that, that she's gone. She was living down in Florida at the time, so I'm sorry to hear that. And, and I'm also glad that Mr. Penman pulled the bill, the ADU bill. As everybody knows, I was opposed to it, so I'm glad that did not come up for vote, and look forward to anything, maybe change in some things, but definitely was not for that, for the ADU bill. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordana. And Mr. Riley?
Yes, just two things. First off, I attended the Hartford County Farm Bureau Bull and Shrimp Roast. Like six hundred participants. It's an excellent bull roast, and I appreciate what Hartford County Farm Bureau does for us in Hartford County. Also, I, I had Vice President, Councilmember Tony G come with me to Cub Pack Scout five-sixty-four in St. Margaret's, and we had, we had to discuss what we do here on the dais and what we do as our job as a county councilman. And so, I appreciate, Tony, you're, you're coming out and that faculty, the council president phoned in, and we had him talk a little bit to the young guys and gals up there. But they wrote me a bunch of letters thanking me for my attendance. They didn't know Councilman Georgiano would be there, but this is probably more for my wife than it is for you folks, but it says, "Dear Mr. Riley, thank you for making the world a better place." And so, I want to read that again, so my wife, just in case she's listening, "Thank you, Mr. Riley, for making the world a better place." Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Riley. Ms. Sadowsz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I have spoken with the constituents of District E who have questions and concerns about the Eva Mar School that will potentially be going there. I did meet with Mr. Cassely yesterday. I am still working to get answers. I plan to meet with the school board. I actually have a call into them as well to get everyone answers, and as I receive them, I will make you all aware of the situation. That's all I really have for this evening. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Sadowsz. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. And, you know, just, just to clarify, you know, I think it's out of respect to Aaron, I'm not going to share any opinions on his situation because he did the same for me a year ago, but I will just say, the situation's different in the sense you're going to get a paycheck in two days, and I didn't get one for four months. So just to, just settle some of the difference there. And I do recognize that my case did say that the Sheriff's Office is a non-county entity. I think the question that wasn't answered there is whether or not it's a state entity. So I just wanted to make sure people understand that my case didn't directly rule on, on that question. But like I said, not, you know, everybody's running their own race, their own situation, and out of respect to you in return for what you did for me, that's all I'll share on that. But I just wanted to share, since you brought my case up and my situation up, just public clarification on that. I was able to attend the Voices of Hope fundraiser, which is a great event. For those of you who don't know what Voices of Hope does in our community, they do tremendous work in harm reduction and helping our, our community through the, the drug, you know, horrible situation that our community is facing all across Hartford County, the state and the country. And I'm very thankful for Voices of Hope, for the people who work in that organization, and I'll continue to support them any way I can. I also attended the Havity Grace State of the City Address, where our mayor, Bill Martin, was able to present to the community at large the work that he and his staff and the entire city government continues to do. I'm always impressed by our city government in Havity Grace and our mayor, Bill Martin, and his leadership and their vision for the city. It's just really exciting to see what's being done. The growth of the Star Center especially is something that I enjoy as someone who lives directly next door to it, the amount of opportunity that is there, especially now with our Tide or Free Trolley that can take you through town, that my wife and I hop on a little too often to go to Bomb Boys, but we enjoy it very much. I attended the Athena Awards last week with Council President Vincenney as well, and that was a great event, just so many people in the room that we knew who were being recognized, tremendous leadership from the women in our community, some of whom are from District F, and one of whom we got to see later in the day, Miss Coach Leah from Havity Grace, who coached the Havity Grace Girls Soccer Team to state championship. We presented them with a proclamation. And then along those lines, I want to congratulate Havity Grace High School Cheerleading Team, who came in third place at the Maryland State One-A Cheerleading Championships, and Madison Berth, who's the Division One-A Girls Wrestling State Champion for this year, which is another first for Havity Grace High School. I think all that goes to show the value of a strong Parks and Rec program. Havity Grace is the shining star for that, and it, it shows in the achievement of our young people. And all that's connected with Women's History Month, which we are now celebrating in the month of March. I also just want to congratulate our HTPS employees, who were announced as being celebrated and finalists in the Excellence in Education Awards. As a former Teacher of the Year finalist, I know what an honor that is. And so if you know anybody on that list, I highly encourage you to reach out and share those kind words. That's the best part of the experience. Personally, two of my bosses are, are nominated for Principal of the Year, Miss Lori Namie from over at Magnolia Middle, where I taught last year, and Mr. Ron Wooden, who's my principal now at Old Post Road Elementary. It's been an honor to serve under good leadership and to work with them. Ron and I worked together at Havity Grace Elementary, and I came back to him because I know the value of having a good boss. So I want to celebrate all those people and all the people who weren't nominated, who continue to serve our community, because I know what a tremendous achievement it is just to show up to a school building each and every day. With that, Mr. President, that's all I have this week.
That's a lot, Mr. Bennett. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We, we try to keep a moderate schedule, but some days they get out of hand, no question. So, business from the President. The first thing I need to do is to announce our budget work session schedule, starting with Monday, April twenty-second, Tuesday, April twenty-third, again, Monday, April the twenty-ninth, and Tuesday, April the thirtieth. These are the work sessions where all of our departments, county departments come to, before us and present, and also all of our outside agencies come to present. A copy of the schedule will be on our website. Audio livestream will be available for those four days of meetings. Audio of the meeting will be archived on the council website. And then, our budget public hearings are scheduled for Wednesday, May the eighth, in these chambers at seven PM, and Monday, the thirteenth, May thirteenth, again, at seven PM in these chambers. Video and audio will be livestreamed and archived on the council website. This past month, I had the opportunity to visit the Jarrettsville-Narrowsville CAB Meeting and present to them. Also, had an opportunity to visit Shar Hope's man house and have dinner with the men, get to know them, spend some time with them. I think there was about nine or ten of them in the house that night. As Mr. Riley talked about, attended the Hartford County Farm Bureau, Farm Bureau's Annual Bull Roast. Huge crowd, very, very, very nice event. Didn't stay there very long because I left and I went to the Level Volunteer Fire Company's annual awards banquet. And just want to thank all of those members of that fire company, as well as all of our volunteers across the county for the service and dedication that they provide to, not only their communities, but to the county as a whole. We had an opportunity to tour the copper mine facility in Edgewood this past week. Mr. Jacobs met us there, took us on a tour, and we went all over the eight fields that are there, talked about the expansion and the development coming in the future, and some of the possible things there. Tended the Athena Leadership Awards. Very proud of all the finalists and the recipients. Want to congratulate Ms. Harris as one of the finalists, and then also congratulate all the recipients, Ms. Stacy Rebert, Stacy Garren, and Dr. Mary Teddy Ray. All extremely, extremely worthy of the awards that they, they received. I too want to express my condolences to the family and friends of Zach Miller. He was a police officer in Bel Air for forty-three years, passed away suddenly on the twenty-eighth. I knew him as a kid, though. He worked for me at the back of the Bel Air Bakery frying donuts and dipping donuts long before he was a police officer, and when I heard they gave him a gun, I couldn't believe it. But just a, just a great individual, immersed in his community. And just, real quick, when you talk about some of the giving back to his community, he was involved with the local moose, the local elks. He was a part of the Shriners, the Mason's Lodge, the American Legion, the Isaac Walton League, the Delta Peach Bottom Fishing Game Association, to name a few. Avid collector of World War II memorabilia, just a, just a great all-around guy, and he will be missed by many, many. I think his visitation is tomorrow and service is Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. And then finally, I want to thank everyone for the well wishes, the flowers and everything that they continue to send to Jeannie as she heals from her latest surgery, and I am stacking up brownie points as quick as I can, because as someone told me earlier, I'm going to go through them pretty quick. So, I'm wishing her all the best, and with that, if no one else has anything, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.